Welcome back my friends to another episode of the Suzy Kings Podcast. Today, I'm joined by my good friend and co-host, Mr. Wesley Cannon, as per usual. And we are going to get a little lesson today from Mr. Wesley. You know, as that meme says, you gonna learn today? That's gonna kind of apply to not only me, but hopefully all of you listeners. And maybe Wes will just brush up and kind of use some of the things that he's talked about today in his cash games tonight that he's playing. But Wes, let's start off here. How you doing, brother?
I'm doing well. How are you?
I'm doing well. I just wanted to kind of start off here by talking about how the last six days of your stream went since we've... So last week, we did the update on your challenge, your 10K to 100K bankroll challenge. Since that conversation, you've had six straight winning sessions. Towing something around 15K?
Yeah, well, so I think I'd had two of them prior. I had two of them before that, I think.
Okay.
Was I, what was that, like 34 point something?
Okay, yeah. Okay, so you had two of the winning sessions before we did our episode.
Yeah, and so anyways, so now it was either one or two. Anyways, at this point, I am sitting at 45.3K.
Yep, started at 10K, 45.3, doing quite alright.
Doing well. And the last six sessions, I've had six straight sessions of at least 2K profit. I've had, almost all of these have been, you know, cash game. Like last night was maybe the most extreme where I won almost 4K in cash and then lost 1,400 in tournaments. There was one day where I lost very small in cash. Actually, it was the one where I started off up 2K right away in cash. And then I ended the day like almost break even in cash, down like 100. And I want to turn, you know, I actually won the money in tournaments that day.
Incredible.
But it's pretty much all been cash games. Like I think I'm down in tournaments during that stretch, maybe not, but it's...
I want to mention how cash games have been absolutely crucial to keeping your, your challenge going in the correct direction. And I think that not only applies to people who are doing challenges, but people who want to grow a bankroll in general for themselves. And I think cash games, cash games are a great place to do that. So today, I really wanted to dive into the fundamentals of cash game as per Wes knows them. And so we're gonna do a nice organized episode here where I'm gonna be prompting you with a bunch of questions. You'll come in with your own content that you've had pre-prepared as well. And yeah, and I think we'll just kind of start, how I have it tailored is that we'll have it kind of starts and kind of go in a sequential order. I'm gonna start off with mindset, work our way from pre-flop all the way through, through the end of hand.
Yeah, why don't we start with mindset? I mean, as you said, why don't you start with a question then? I have a thought or two on mindset, like, yeah, just, just sort of the change in, yeah, how you're trying to go about the game. So let's hear what your question was.
Okay, and you know, one thing I want to mention before we start is I look forward to not only, you know, doing this episode with you, but also to study myself more. I'd like to start playing some more cash and, and, you know, put the effort in that I put into tournaments that I have into cash, so I can also build my role, right? So let's go ahead and start with some mindset and approach for cash game fundamentals. So I guess the first one, the first question I have is gonna be, what are the biggest mindset differences between cash games and tournaments that players should understand?
So the main thing is in cash, you want to, it's purely chippy V all the time, right?
Can you explain by, to the people who aren't as familiar with chippy V is what, what, how does that folk? Or what are you supposed to focus on when you say something like that?
Yeah, so to put it simply here, let's, let's do the math here. So like, let's say you are in a pot where on the river, you're facing a half pot bet. So $50 into 100, we'll say, so there's now 150 and you have to call 50 to win. So you're getting three to one, meaning you need to be right, you know, one time for every three you're wrong, or one out of four.
Yeah, so 25% of the time.
Yeah, so.
So you add that one on top of the three, so it's actually one out of four instead of one out of three. I think that's kind of a misconception some people have.
Yeah, the, the best way to do it, I think, is just pretend you call, then the pot is 200. Your 50 represents a quarter of that. So for you to be profitable, you need to win the pot at least or more than a quarter of the time.
Okay, I mean, that's easy, that's easy to boil down. I will say, a lot of players can probably be lazy, including myself, and not want to do all that in the, in the moment. And they just start, they just start, you know, just going with what they think, the decision they think is best without kind of diving into that. What, can you, are you always asking yourself your pot odds? Is that, or is that only in heads-up pots where it's easier or?
It's more heads-up, it's, it's...
And do you ever do it without doing that, just because, I mean, just probably because of autopilot and knowing the situation enough?
Yeah, it's, it's not as different as tournaments and that's, it's like most spots you'll just have kind of a snap decision to make. You'll know instinctively, you know, it won't be close. But yeah, in close spots, especially on the river, or if I'm facing a bet on the turn and I want to know what my, you know, how often I would need to win to break even? Or like, let's say I'm facing a pot-sized bet on turn, 100 into 100, so now it's 200. So it's like, okay, maybe I need to win, maybe it seems like I need to win 33% of the time or more to break even. But I'm like, okay, well, the times I hit my draw, how much more do I, can I reasonably expect to make from this on average?
So the implied odds?
Implied odds, yeah. I should say too, like, you kind of should be doing this in tournaments, but it's a little more, I wouldn't say straightforward in cash, but there, there's no ICM, you know, the situation never changes in cash. You're just trying to play for what makes money in the long run. And so, so having more of that math mindset can help, but...
Do you have any tips that people can do to start? Cause I think one thing that will make this easier for listeners is making it a habit, right? Starting off is gonna be way more difficult than if you've done it a bunch and then kind of have it, you know, built into your process. So do you have any tips maybe you could give to beginners or people, maybe not even beginners? Players who are very experienced, but don't really do the math part of the game? I mean, should they just keep a calculator handy and do the math right there in, in, in real time or?
I would, you know, I would just keep, if you're, if you're playing online, it's gonna be easier.
Imagine you're facing a, or you're, you bet the river live and somebody pulls out a calculator.
I wonder if that would be allowed?
Why wouldn't it be? I mean, it's, if you pull out a calculator versus his phone to do it, right?
Yeah, yeah, if you legit have a calculator. Yeah, I don't know. I guess the way I would, the, the mindset shift I would make and is just, there's no such thing as waiting for a better spot in cash. It's just plus EV or it's not, you know?
I think, yeah, I think if you really want to get to that point in your game, I think it's gonna be really important to start studying with solvers. So you can see what the EV differences are when you're making plays. So for example, you play a hand, you throw it into the solver, it'll tell you if it was a plus EV decision or not a minus EV decision. And then it will tell you with all the other.
I'm so proud of you right now.
Oh, thanks Wes. But yeah, I think studying that and then you'll start to learn what kind of plays are positive EV and which ones are not. And yeah, and then you can start implementing that like you did with the rest of your game.
Yeah, and of course, like, in the moment, you won't necess, you know, in the moment, you're always basing it off of what you, you assume their ranges. But like, I definitely think, in fact, someone asked on the stream last night, like, how would you, you know, I, I want to become better at cash, like even low stakes cash. How should I go better at, or go about getting better at post-flop play? And it's like, well, you should, at least you should study solvers. And I think cash games, I, I think the thing I like about cash games is it's not that the solver is more valuable, but it's more realistic to be able to learn stuff from it. Because in tournaments, there are a million different ICM things going on at a lot of points in the tournament. You can be in a situation where stack sizes are wildly different, which like cash games can be that way too. But you can really, you can really like look at, okay, let's learn some stuff about 100 big blind poker, which is kind of what we'll focus on today.
Okay.
And it's, it's, there are less variables, which make it actually, it's a simpler game. It's easier to get good at, but from a relative sense, that means there are just gonna be more people who are very good at it. You know, it's not easier to beat, but it's easier to learn.
Yeah, because there's not as many dynamics.
Yeah.
You're typically always playing at 100 big blinds, because every time you, you know, you lose a stack, you top up. This is specifically, I mean, more, you'll see this more online, right? Where you can just top up, you don't have to wait for the chip runner to come bring you chips, et cetera.
Exactly.
Okay, so moving on from that question, this one kind of tailored to you personally. How do you think about your session goals before you start one? Is it about like, do you have like a set amount of buy-ins you're trying to win? Are you playing just a specific number of hours? Yeah, how does that look like for you before you start a session?
Yeah, definitely not, there's definitely not a certain amount I would say I want to win. Just but, you know, ironically, the last six sessions of, now I need to be careful not to go in with that mindset of, oh, I should try and win at least 2K, because like, that, that's an unrealistic goal to hit every time. I mean, if it was that realistic, I would just be rich.
Well, everybody would be, everybody, I mean, yeah. So no, you've been obviously running very well to also have those, that many sessions winning in a row. But I mean, and don't get me wrong, guys, we love poker tournaments and we will have a lot of poker tournament content. But today is about cash and I think, I mean, to have six winning tournament sessions in a row is astronomical, it feels like. Whereas in cash, it can happen more regularly.
Cash, it's very realistic, yeah.
Yeah, compared to, obviously.
Yeah, so to answer your question, I would say not the amount that I'm gonna win. Sometimes I have a time, a rough amount of time I'm looking to play. I do think that, I do think that's a more, something that's more realistic to do. I know for me as a pro, it's like, yeah, if there's guys blasting off at high stakes, am I gonna play a little longer? Yes, I will be doing that, you know?
So you just follow the money, you follow the money?
Yeah, that, that is sort of the mindset. And that's sort of been the mindset shift of my whole challenge in a way too, where I'm like, okay, I, I don't need to play 109s on ACR, like, I can, I, I think my average win weight, win rate. Win rate is gonna be so much higher, playing a cash game on like clubs.
Yeah.
And that's kind of shown to be true, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think you want to, and I'm talking a little bit more about online, but this applies to live too, is like, just look for, look for games that are good, like you don't, one mistake I have made in the past is like playing against, in just a high stakes rag battle or against players who are all like solid. And not that, that, that is good for improving your game, but.
It's not good for your hourly though, probably.
Yeah, yeah, and so, you know, if you're looking to make money from poker, build a bankroll, I think you wanna, you do want a game select pretty, you know, you can call it bum hunting, but yeah, you.
That's what we call it around these streets, so.
You do want to make sure you're in games where there's, you know, where, where you think you'll be significantly profitable long-term.
Daniel Kennedy's sitting, that's where you guys should.
Yeah, you want to be right on, directly on Daniel Kennedy's left.
Guaranteed profit, yeah, step one, get to Daniel Kennedy's, Daniel Kennedy's left, step two blank, step three profit. Actually, step two is profit as well, but yeah, okay.
Well, that kind of actually. He walks away sad.
We love you, Daniel. Anyways, so that kind of followed it, that kind of bled, we'll say, into my third question, which is how important is table selection, you know? How do you decide whether to sit down or not? And I think, let me ask you, for people in the, say you're playing online, you're trying to build a role in online cash games, 20 cent, 50 cent. So 20 no limit, 50 no limit, 100 no limit, all the way up into even 200 no limit, which would be like 1-2 no limit, right? In, in live terms. What, in, in those games is selection as important, just because the overall field is gonna be a lot less capable?
Well, my answer for myself would be, like, for me personally, in those stakes, I, I would be comfortable at any table. But I just also don't really, like, I will sometimes play 1-2, but I still game select, cause like 1-2, a somewhat beatable 1-2 game, it's still only 1-2, whereas like a somewhat beatable 2-5 game or 5-10 game is more juicy for me. So it's like, to play 1-2, I want it to be like a really, you know, a really splashy game. I would, but I would say for all the listeners there, it's like, I think a lot of them, I, I think it's just as important to game select at those stakes, if your goal is to be profiting. Because I think, I think, I mean, I, I don't know all the listeners, but I think we do have a lot of people who are much more profitable tournament players than cash players, just from.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah, off the top of my head. But, but yeah, I, I think, yeah, whatever stakes you're at, if your goal is to be profitable, you want to make sure you're being honest about the games you're in and.
And about your play.
And about your play, it's easy to, even if, you know, even if you're a decent player, even if you're not like the fish at the table, it's easy to sort of, it, it doesn't mean you're crushing the table either. So like the, you know?
Yeah.
If, and it's totally fine to just sit in a game where your goal is to play against the very good players and try and improve.
Okay, let's get into, let's get into some post-flop stuff, how's that sound?
Yeah. I do have some, some general ideas for pre-flop if we want to go.
Did I say post-flop?
You did.
I meant pre-flop.
Okay.
Sequential order here, I think, I think post-flop is post-flop, right?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just an idiot anyway, so pre-flop strategy, so you said you had some pre-flop stuff?
Yeah, just to make it kind of simple, here's what I would say is, so, so let's say we're 100 bigs deep. Generally, what I do is earlier position on min raise, cutoff and button all two and a half X. That'll just be my standard open.
So that's like the last two positions, the button and the cutoff, okay?
Yeah, and then small blind, if it folds to me in small blind, I'll go 3X.
Okay, so you, so your, your sizings are increasing as you, well, actually, that's, this would be a weird way to put it. But so, yeah, in early position, your sizings are gonna be just main clicks. In late position, it's gonna be 2.5 X. And then in, if say it folds to you in the small blind, then it's gonna be 3X. And obviously, if people are limping in front of you, you're going to size these up.
Yep, if they're si, yeah, if they're.
So for example, say, say, let's, let's do the same thing you said, but now imagine there's a limper in each position. So say you're in early to middle position, but under the gun limps, what's your opening size going to be in early to middle position? You just going like four and a half?
Yeah, something like that.
So we're not just jumping at one big blind, we're gonna just pop it up to pot size pretty much?
Yeah, although I have seen other good players do a couple different things, so I don't necess.
This is just kind of a foundational type of.
Yeah, yeah, we'll go, yeah, I, I think definitely size it up more, because they have a hand that they're at least interested in. You know, it's not like it's a random two cards, even if it is kind of.
Does your, without getting too deep in the weeds, does your opening strategy, does your opening range tighten up because of the limper?
It does, yeah, cause you already know, so, so it's like, there's already an extra player in the pot. So if you're in cutoff and then there's a limper, it's almost like there's a straddle. Like, if there was a straddle, you would be tighter because there's an additional player. But now, now this is a player who.
He VP it.
It's not two random cards, they at least have a hand there, they would like to play, you know, they probably don't have nine five off. I mean, even players.
If you're in, if you're in 20 or 50 no limit, they will have nine five off.
They might, they might.
Oh, they will, trust.
Yeah.
Those are my streets, Wes.
You know, they are, they are.
I dabble in the smaller cash games and that's all right. Anyways, okay, so, and now, so let me ask you, say we got limp, we got a limper in late, no, just folds to late position, limper, and you're in small blind. What are you opening? Are you still just going pot here, kind of just making it the same? Are you, or like 4.5 bigs is what I should say, something like that? Are you gonna size it up even more, I guess, is my question?
Probably more, probably a little bit, yeah.
Okay.
And then same with big blind, if there's limpers and then I, you know, I'm going like six or seven X at least from big blind.
We know a lot of our listeners are tournament players. What, how should their hand selections differentiate from tournament to cash games?
Just be tighter.
Pre-flop, that is.
Yeah, yeah, pre-flop be tighter and then post-flop, it, it just kind of plays itself. Pre-flop, and I'll, I'll give an exception though, so on Club WPT, they have, everyone is ante-ing half a big blind. So it's eight-handed, there's four big blinds in the middle to start the hand. On, in those cash games, it's the opposite, because like, there's so much money already in the middle that you're gonna loosen. You're supposed to like, open any offsuit king on the button.
I think, I think a lot of people are actually playing, you know, cash games on that site right now because of how new and juicy it is. So I think that was a great idea to bring up for people to listen to. So obviously, so I guess the kind of a, by a rule of thumb is if there's gonna be more chips pre-flop, not put in voluntarily by someone, you're gonna widen your range.
Yeah, the dead money in the middle, I think people do make the mistake of thinking, oh, if there are more players who have entered, then like I need to loosen up. That's not as true, because like, yeah, I, I always hear the, you know, let's say you're, I, I guess I hear it more in tournaments, because I play more live tournaments than live cash. But let's say, there's an opener and then five people call and I'm in the big blind and then I fold. Or let's say it's someone else and he looks down and he's like, oh, you guys, like, I can't, some, some sort of comment to, to imply that he knows pot odds, he's like, well, you can't fold this one, I can't fold anything now, or you guys priced me in. And, and I've folded big blind before where there's an open and five calls and they're.
100%, you're gonna, I mean, even if you're getting the correct odds, you're often more times than not gonna find yourself in a spot where you're either getting coolerd or.
Yeah, and the thing is like, the correct, the correct odds sort of change, because it's like, yeah, the more money that goes in, the better your odds are, but the less frequently you will win the pot, right? If you have a hand like 8-4 offsuit, the more people come in, you know, there's, suddenly there's gonna be someone with 9-8 suited, 8-7 suited, who dominates you and whatnot. So like, the more people entering the pot and putting money in doesn't necessarily mean you should be more incentivized. Like maybe with a pocket pair or a suited ace, where you are, there's a type of flop you're really looking for. But, but yes, what you're saying is if there's more money and in terms of antis, then yes, you absolutely want to go for it, which is, you know, why in tournaments, you're a little looser pre-flop, as well as the lack of rake from the pot.
Let me ask you, is, is position more important in cash games than it is in tournaments?
Um, not inherently, but it usually ends up being that way, because position, the deeper you are, the more important position is. And so in cash, you're generally deeper, and so position is usually more important.
Okay, I think that's actually well said. Yeah, just the deeper you are, the more important position is, I think is a good takeaway from that, okay? And now, let's talk about three betting and four betting pre-flop. Can we talk about how people should think about three betting and four betting instead of calling in cash games?
Yeah, and I know we talked a bit about this on a recent episode, but in cash, you want to, again, I'm going to refer more to online cash as it would be on most sites, not the one with the antis in the middle. But yeah, in a normal online cash game, you want to play sort of a three-better fold strategy unless you're in big blind or on button. And even on button, it's okay to think of it that way. Small blind, you actually can do a little flattening, but it's still more of a three-better fold. Like when you're, I should put it this way, if you're like 200 or 300 big blinds deep, you actually can do more flattening, but still like not as loose as I think a lot of people would.
Due to implied odds, like we can set mine more, et cetera, et cetera, things like that?
Yeah, you, you are in a spot where it's easier to realize your equity with like the suit, you know, suited Broadway type hands and whatnot.
Okay.
But yeah, three, three betting, also, so when you're 100 bigs deep, here's what I would say. So like technically, if someone min raises, if you're, I, I would think of it, you want a three bet to either 6.5 to 7.5 bigs with it being, if you're on the button, you can go a little bigger. Generally, what I do, yeah, just like, if you're in position, three bet them to like three, from 3.2 to 3.7 or 3.8 X, some, somewhere in that range.
Okay.
And then if you're out of position, it's a lot bigger. Like if someone opens to, let's say, two and a half X in cutoff or button, from small blind, I'm going like 12 big blinds. Big blind, I'm actually going 13, which is just what the solver does. Like you, you're going a little bit more polarized from big blind.
Okay.
And.
Okay.
And yeah, so then the, it, you'll, you'll see how much bigger you want to go there, because position is such a, a thing. And then the, the subsequent four bet sizing will be like a click almost.
It's funny, that's one thing I've definitely noticed, you know, cash game, cash game three and four bets, four bets, I guess, and up, I guess, more so specifically compared to cash, remind me of early 2000 tournaments. Like, do you remember, like, you'd be, you'd be seeing like seven bets in the main event coverage with like ace, you know, ace four off and stuff like that?
Yeah, the, the four bet is kind, the four bet when you're in position is just like that, you know?
Would it be safe to assume that the clicking is more so just to protect your ranges? Your, your, or to balance your ranges, I should say, just to give you opportunity to give away with bluffs? At where, you know?
So, so here's what I would say is like, we're 100 bigs deep, we are in position. Our opponent has just three bet us to 12 bigs and we're in position. The reason we go to like 25 bigs in position is because if we put too many, if we put too much more in the pot, we're just committed to calling a jam. So I'll see, well, here's one way that I might notice someone is like a recreational right off the bat, is they, they open, maybe they open a good size on button and then all three bet to 12 big blinds. And we're 100 bigs deep and they, they go to 30 or 35 or 36 bigs from in position. Then I know that they don't really know, they don't really understand, like they've already made it so that they are priced into calling a jam.
Okay.
Unless they have absolute rags, right? But, and, and I find that usually this will just be a, it will be appropriately a very strong range for them. But you want to go to the small sizing, because that way your four bet bluffs can fold if I jam.
Without committing, being committed.
Yeah, yeah, so you, yeah, you're not pricing yourself in to call it off.
Okay.
And you'd be surprised, I think people have this idea, like, I shouldn't say, I think it would be very fair to feel like, well, if I just four bet click it, aren't they priced in with everything?
They are not from what I've, I, I, that was my initial thought, but now that I, now that I see it's become a standard, people will start folding hands.
Yeah, and it just, you know, it goes back to the math, like, here, I'll, I'll.
And then if you're nutted, you want them calling anyways, so.
Yeah, so well, I'm gonna pull up a range here, like cutoff, we'll say cutoff, four bets to 25 big blinds against small blind. Small blind should, I mean, should fold like 38% of their range, which is actually substantial. So it should include like ace nine suited, ace eight suited, ace jack off, king queen off, king jack off, queen ten suited, queen jack suited, which actually I think I would make the mistake of calling. And then some other hands, like ace queen off, king jack suited kind of mix.
Okay.
King six suited, so like, the goal isn't to, now obviously like 38% folds, that means 62% doesn't fold. But when you're clicking it up to 25 blinds, if that already gives you that much fold equity, that's pretty big on its own. Plus, if they just call, you get to play a pot in position. Should we, so I think people might be curious. I think people might be curious, you know, what, when we're cut off for small blind here, for example, what sort of hand do we want to four bet bluff?
Okay. I like it.
And it's sort of like a,
Give me a hypothetical here and test my knowledge. Let's see if I got anything.
Okay. So yeah, so we're cut off.
We opened, we opened at 2.5 and cut off.
Yep. Um, or I guess it's GTO is 2.3, but whatever, it's same.
Yep.
Small blind goes to 11.5 bigs. We're gonna four bet to 25 bigs. So obviously we'll have aces, kings, ace, king suited.
Yep.
Actually ace, king off can just four bet rip sometimes along with jacks, but.
Are we talking about what hand should I be four betting here with?
Yeah, yeah. What sort of hands might you four bet bluff?
Uh, probably like nine, 10, oh, jack, queen, oh, I'm just kidding.
Hey, this isn't you and me.
It's you and me for sure. Um, I think, let me just, I'm just gonna throw out some hands that come to my mind immediately. And then you give me an idea if they're correct, if I should be four betting these hands. First ones that come to mind are the, obviously the European aces. Like ace four suited, ace five suited.
A bit, it's, it's not too bad, but those actually make a little bit. I should, I shouldn't even say that. Yes, those fall into it. There aren't, I will say this, there aren't really.
Those want me to call maybe because I can?
Well, well, here's what I'll say is like, there aren't any like hands that you are four bet bluffing a lot. There's just a few hands that you'll either mostly call or fold and then you'll do a little bit of four bet bluffing. So there's not like a magical four, four bet bluff hand, which is why it's.
I, I feel like I got a few in my mind that might be magical.
All right, let's do it.
Probably not, but I think another one that comes to my head immediately is king 10 suited.
Okay, that, yeah, that's like one where you, you wanna mostly call and four bet some, so ye- yes, that's one of them.
What about ace, jack, oh?
Yes, that's a, so that's one where you want to either four bet or just fold it.
Yeah, four bet or fold. Okay, that makes sense. King 10, because it's suited, we can, so here's the thing. So like, for example, for our listeners, king 10, I'm gonna say king 10 is just snap muck.
Um, offsuit?
Yeah, king 10 offsuit is just gonna be, hit the bin. Uh, king 10 suited is going to be sometimes, uh, mostly call and then sometimes four bet.
Yep.
Ace, jack, oh, is going to be sometimes fold, sometimes four bet. Um, no in between. And then let's, let's go, for example, ace, jack suited. I think we're gonna be calling this and not four betting it.
Yeah, yeah. See, you, you'd know this stuff a bit.
And then,
Cause yes, it's, it's like too good where ace, x suited is a hand that's like, it's still not good enough to call a jam, but it's good enough where it would really suck if that happened.
Yeah. And then especially if we're playing in position, cause like, yeah, okay. And now let's, let's get into something that might be a little bit more uncomfortable for me. And something I've been seeing people do more frequently is, how about ace, queen off and ace, queen suited? What are we doing with these two hands?
Ace, queen suited, we just call and ace, queen off is.
Is that just like ace, jack off, four bet fold?
No, it, it's four better call.
Four better call. Okay. So never folding ace, queen off. That makes sense, I guess. Yeah. Because we can obviously be ahead of a lot of their three betting range.
Yeah. Yeah. And we're, we're in position.
And now what I was saying was making me uncomfortable is I see a lot of people just flattening ace, king and not four betting it in deep stack cash games.
Yeah. Um, in this case, we can do all three, we can call, we can four bet, or we can just shove.
Oh, I thought you were gonna say fold. I thought that was.
Oh, no.
Okay, good. Cause I'll tell you, when my fold button doesn't exist in that spot, so.
It definitely should not. And then, yeah, so the show, the four bet shove range is jacks or ace, king. Like that's literally all.
Jax and ace, king off?
In this spot, yeah.
You can just, just send a hundred biggies?
Yeah.
Over like 11?
Yep. And there's some where it's like, you can send it over, if you're, I think low jack versus cutoff or button, you can send it over like six and a half bigs with ace, king, and then like kings. You'd be surprised that. Like you can four bet rip a hundred bigs profitably with some hands.
Okay, okay. Okay. Well, I think that was, I think that's, um, I think that's good. And but, but here's the thing, there's so much more to that than what we just discussed there. So I think this is where you can, without having to, you know, obviously a great way to learn is to take hands you've played and throw them in the solver and see what kind of EV you're running, like we mentioned earlier. But also you can just run, without even playing a hand, you can just type these spots in and, and like these big hands in and, um, and just see what the solver says.
And yeah, pre flop is very easy. I will, I will say, um, you don't even need to be paying for subscription to see at least the basic hundred big blind pre flop stuff. Like you can just do this for free here. It's a good baseline.
Using what, what are your favorite tools?
I, for that, I use GTO wizard, um, but there's plenty of, uh, plenty of other tools like that.
Link's not in the description. We have no affiliation.
Yeah, no affiliation with them. We, man, maybe you should though, with how much I've kind of referenced them over the.
Considering our podcast is a strategy podcast using, you know, with a mix of feel and solver play, like we definitely should get like a solver sponsor. That'd be sick. All right, time to send an email. Let's put this on pause. I gotta send an email here.
There we go.
Anything, lastly, you wanna touch on pre flop before moving to some post flop questions?
Yes, I was gonna just list off, in, in this specific spot where you're talking about, the other sort of four bet bluff hands from cutoff can be ace, 10 suited, ace, nine suited, king, nine suited. And then like queen, 10 suited, king, queen off. And these are all low frequency, which makes it kind of easy to forget to do. Cause all of these hands mostly either call or fold.
How'd you decide to do these low frequency plays?
One thing you could do is like say, okay, this is my aggressive suit today. So every time I get hearts, I'm, in, if it's a spot where it's a low freak four bet, I'm gonna only four bet the hearts, right?
Just to, and that's your randomization.
Yep.
That's cool. I've never, I've never heard of it that way, but yeah, I think that's cool.
Yeah. And obviously, you know, if, if people are savvy, you just choose a different suit every, you know what I mean? Like?
Yeah.
So, um, and then, oh, I had one other thought. Oh, oh yeah. One thing I, I sort of had in my notes. The, you know, obviously there's a couple of exceptions, but generally in cash, if you get three bet, you should not, just have a mindset of, I'm not gonna call a three bet with an offsuit hand. Is, if I'm out of position. There are some spots where yes, like ace, king, ace, queen, king, queen maybe are fine and maybe ace, jack, like cutoff first button.
Yeah.
But basically all your offsuit stuff should fold and then the best of it should four bet.
This kind of reminds me of playing like a PLO style, just because you always want to try and aim for more nutted type hands.
A bit, a bit, yeah. Like you want to, uh, yeah, the playability will matter. And then, yeah, like I guess even in position, button versus, um, small blind or big blind, you're still, the only offsuit hands you're calling in position versus a three bet are like ace, queen, king, queen, ace, jack, you know? It's so, there, there's so many. Like you just don't do it basically. Now, if someone, again, if I see someone who is, instead of three betting to 12 big blinds, they're three betting to like eight, that suddenly I'm calling all the Broadway hands, you know, like suddenly it's, it's way, we're just getting a way better price, so we kind of have to.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. But, but overall the mindset should be like, versus the appropriate sizing, we're not flattening three bets with basically any offsuit hands.
I think that's a great, uh, kind of strategy to start with. Yeah. Um, you know, I would, I think it's fair to say that pre flop is gonna be the easiest of all of this. Things are gonna be, become a lot more dynamic post flop. And, uh, one last thing I wanna touch on that, it says, I'm assuming is that I'm assuming that this, the reason we wanna go with these suited hands is because of the dynamics of post flop, where we can start floating with backdoor flush draws and things like that.
That's a big thing, yeah, where it's just easier to realize that equity. Yeah, for one thing, you just have more equity with a suited hand, but also it'll be easier to realize the equity. Like if you have king 10 suited and it comes, you know?
Maybe, is it fair to say that on top of that, not, instead of just realizing your equity, but because you have these backdoors and you float, it's gonna give you more opportunities to, to, to bluff in position later on as well?
Correct, yeah. When you, when you're able to float the flop with like one, with overcards and the backdoor.
Yeah.
You, you would have had to fold the offsuit hand, you know?
Yep. So now all of a sudden you, you have more opportunity to win that hand, just because you're still in it nonetheless, or with that, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
It, it makes a big difference. Um, anyway, so you got some questions about post flop?
Yeah, a lot of them. No. All right. So, um, this one is a great question. I think it's a very basic question, but a great question. What are some of the biggest mistakes you see amateurs make post flop? Or on the flop, not post flop, but on the flop.
Just on the flop.
Yeah.
Not, not check raising enough. I don't know if, some players will call too wide, some will overfold. They're, they're different types, I guess.
Give me a quick, just a few, first few things that come to your minds, um, rapid fire. What are some good check raises? That don't have equity.
Oh, or yeah, like.
Are that aren't made hands yet, I should say.
Yeah, you know, on maybe a queen, five, five board, if you have the seven, eight suited, we'll say six, seven suited with the three to a straight flush, like.
So if the five of hearts out there and you got seven, eight of hearts?
Yeah, that, that's the sort of stuff where you probably wanna do a little raising, check raising. You, you know, I don't know, it doesn't have to be that combo specifically, but some, you wanna have some bluffs, cause like, on queen, five, five, we wanna be able to check raise when we have a five all the time. You know? And so we also wanna be able to check raise like, and it can be a small check raise, but yeah, like some of those double backdoor hands. The idea being like, if we have seven high and backdoors, we can just fold out like jack, 10 offsuit right away. You know, even though we're a two to one underdog.
Okay.
Maybe more.
Okay. So not, so not enough check raise. So things that amateurs are recre, excuse me, I cannot talk today. What's the biggest mistake we're seeing recreational players make is not check raising enough? What are some other ones?
I'll, I'll actually say one that I think even a mistake pros might make is not, not having enough big C bets in appropriate spots where like, we have the nut and range advantage, like on the, you know, maybe it's a 10, eight, three with a flush draw board. Or it's a ace, jack, four, we'll do ace, jack, four with the flush draw.
The, the flop, that's always the flop.
Yep. Dude, I s- I see it so much. I mean, that, all flops, when I have seven tables up.
Is that part of recency bias, I think?
Oh yeah, I notice it every time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But you know, knowing when to bet large, I, I have seen a lot of situations and maybe it's more so live, but where people who I think of as good players, they just sort of do the auto 30% thing and it's like, think about, think about why you're using a sizing. And you, you're not always gonna get it right, but one thing I, one thing I liked that Jason Hoffman said when we had him on here, and granted, this was more tournaments, but I think you can apply it to cash too, where on any given board, it sounds like he just has one sizing he uses. And you don't have to, like, you can have multiple, but so, so I'll give an example, like on the 10, the 10, eight, three, let's say we have 10, eight of diamonds and three of hearts on the flop. If we have aces with a diamond, that's a value hand I'm comfortable going small with. Because it's the least vulnerable of our, you know, our.
One pair and less hands?
Yeah. If we have pocket tens, top set, like I'm comfortable going small. I want every hand in there. I want all the floats in there and I wanna.
Plus you block the top pair.
Induce a check raise. Yeah. I'm targeting a weaker range because two of the tens are gone. But if I have pocket jacks, if I have ace, 10, if I have pocket threes, these are all hands that like, one of two things are true. One, it's more vulnerable where it's very likely ahead now, but more likely that there's a bad run out. Or two, we have a very, very, very strong hand, but we unblock their strongest calling hands.
So how do we balance this without getting exploited by, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah. Um, you choose, you choose bluff similarly. So like the queen jacks, the queen nine suiteds, the jack nine suiteds, those would be the big bet bluffs.
We'll size them up. Okay.
Yep. I, I tend to think of it like, we, we use the same cards to bluff. Like if, if queens, jacks are hands that we're betting big for value, the queen, jack, queen, nine, jack, nine, those are gonna be our big bet bluff.
That makes sense. How do we balance the smaller ones then? The ones that we are, the bets, the ones? Oh wait, that's what we're balancing. How do we balance with the big bets then?
Or tho- those are the big, so like.
Sorry, the small bets then.
Yeah. What, what do we bluff, um, the small sizing with? I would think it would just be the, the air hand. So like, and, and not, not like king, high, ace, high, but six, five suited, six, five of clubs where maybe we, it's like, okay.
We can check, get check raised and just snap fold and.
Yeah, like this is absolute junk, but we can still fold out like queen, seven of spades, right? A lot of that stuff.
I like this. This is, uh, I like the way we're looking at this.
Yeah.
Oh, Wes, we have a problem, dude.
Oh, what's the prob, what's the problem?
We are not recording. I'm just kidding, we're recording. I just wanted to see your hard job.
You, you got me there. We're like, geez, we're 45 minutes in, I'm like.
You just.
You had me.
Deer in the headlights looking at me. I, I just had to mix it up here a little bit. All right, back to the strategy.
You are, you are something, my friend.
Uh, keep, I gotta keep you on your toes, Wes. So anyways, um, okay. Now, we, we talked a little bit about continuation betting, um, there. What's, I guess that, that kind of answered my second question was how should players think about continuation bed, continuation betting in cash games? And I think that kind of tou- touched it, do you think? Or is any of the last thoughts you have on that?
Yeah, I think that, I mean, of course we could go for hours, but I think that's a good way to look at it. I actually would say, uh, in the post flop sense, it's not as different from tournaments, like pre flop in tournaments, you are the, or pre flop, the ranges are gonna look very different and the sizings might look different due to stack sizes and whatnot. A, a, and that part is also true post flop, but I, I would say there's a general, like, definitely don't be afraid to overbet, even just on the flop too, in a spot like that. Like taking an overbet with jacks or something on that sort of board is actually like pretty reasonable.
I think what we should do, because of how deep the conversation can get, we should almost make this a two-part series where we do, uh, study sessions, turn and river. What are your thoughts? Like, just because of how deep we can get into that?
You know what? I mean, I think this was Daniel Kennedy who suggested it, so. But we're, we're gonna go here, like.
Oh, we've said his name too many times on this episode already.
I know, it's a disgrace. And he won the meetup game last week again too.
Quit talking about it.
I mean, we have to, we have to give him the shout out. We have to make it fair, but.
By the way, if you wanna come meet up, win our meetup game, you'll get all, you'll get just as much shit talked about you on the podcast. Actually, there's not a chance. We always will always talk most, the most shit about Daniel. Bless you. Bless you. Oh, Wes is over here having a sneeze attack.
Yeah. Okay. Probably the fir-, I don't remember that happening before.
That's definitely the first time you've had a sneeze attack on the podcast.
Yeah.
Yeah. So just to kind of say where we're at, um, we're making fun of Daniel Kennedy.
Yeah. So one thing he suggested a while ago, I think, is knowing when to give up your bluffs on turn and river. And I think that would be a good thing to incorporate.
Ooh, yes. I think that's something I struggle with too, cause it's like, you're at the turn, half your stacks in the middle already. I don't, I, I, I have ace, king on a queen, 10, four, seven. Uh, again, heads up against big blind. Do I continue here or do I not? Right? That's, uh, just the first.
Just kind of top of your head.
Just the first thing off the top of my head, but, um, do we continue betting? Do we double barrel? Anyways, so that might be a good one to double barrel on. What do you think? Versus big blind.
Well, you said half your stacks in the middle.
Well, it was like.
It might be less, right?
Yeah, I suppose. I guess, yeah, that's assuming there's a three or four bet pre flop then.
It actually sounds like, i- it might be, but it also sounds like you can just be ahead too, cause there's king, jack, king, nine, jack, nine, jack, eight.
See, look at this, Wes.
Had all the straight draws.
Put the wizard hat on right now. Okay, no. So without getting too stuck on that, um, okay. So we, we're in post flop. Um, sorry, just getting back through my notes here. Okay. In deep stack situations, which we find ourselves in in cash, and again, this is, this obviously is where tournament players will find themselves the most. this obviously is where tournament players will find themselves the most uncomfortable, because oftentimes we're not this deep. What's, how does your bet sizing strategy change from flop to river? I guess, is that just very specific, scenario specific?
Yeah, there will be times when especially in a three bet pot or a four bet pot where maybe I'll C bet ten percent or twenty percent or fifty percent, or there will literally be times we're out of position, we three bet pre get called, SPR is three or four. There are some flops where we can just shove the flop. Like the jack ten X board, maybe queen ten X. There there are some boards where we can three or four X shove on the flop. And so the the it's just so situational. There's not necessarily a automatic size you want to have. But you just want to think about the reasoning about it, the the reasoning for it. You can this is one thing that streaming helps me with. I can say I'm C betting here. We're C betting one fifth pot. We're just trying to target. You know, let's say we have four bet pocket kings pre flop.
Yeah.
And the flop is ace high.
Yep.
We C bet
King magnets, baby, the ace high flop.
Yep. We C bet very small and can get called by queens or jacks once still. And minimize what we lose against an ace. And then so so there's a specific type of hand we're targeting with for value. Or if we have something like the king, nine suited there. Maybe we bet that small because we can fold out the I I guess not, there's maybe not a lot that would fold up, but but there are spots where we four bet pre flop out of position and we just miss completely. The flop is monotone eight, six deuce, and we have king, ten of hearts. And we bet ten or twenty percent. And our goal is just, it's just like not an ambitious bet. We're like targeting the ace X suited of the other suits that aren't clubs, right? Or the king, queen suited. There's just this range that we can bet small and get to fold. And so being intentional with what you're targeting in a way. And vice versa, you know, if it's a value hand. Our goal with the small bet is to be floated by the wide range. And then on the turn, we can continue to get value against a a stronger range where we get one small bet from the weak stuff and then
Okay.
you know, continue from there.
Okay.
I think uh, I think yeah, just being sort of intentional where let's say that the flop is we we've three bet king, queen suited in position, get called the flop, the board, sorry, the pot is something like fifteen big blinds. We'll see that one third on the flop of king, eight, three.
Yep.
And our goal is we want to get called by the pocket pairs, by maybe some ace X with backdoors. By an eight, by any king, of course. And then we get called and the turn is a five, so king, eight, three, five. Now we're sizing up on the turn to a size where we can shove river reasonably, but now our goal is to get value from the king, jack suited, king, ten suited, king, nine suited, as well as maybe maybe there could be a suited eight that now turned a backdoor flush draw.
I like it.
Tens, nines, jacks could still call. You know, we're we're sort of condensing what we're targeting. And then if the river is a a blank, let's say the three pairs. And we check or they check and now we know that they would have four bet aces or ace, king, priest. So we essentially have the nut. We have the nut, one pair hand. I guess two, it's two pair now, but we really only lose two pocket eights and quad threes and maybe fives. And so then it's like, okay, now we shove to get value from any king or have ace, eight suited hero call. You know, e- each bet is with a specific intention of what to get value from or what to bluff.
Okay, yeah, I like it. I think that was really well said. Okay. Any last thoughts on post flop play? I got one more, a few more things I want to discuss before we start wrapping this episode up. Um, I do think we should do an episode on turn and river, though. We're going to get more deep into it, you know what I mean? Like
Yeah.
Get really into that.
Yeah, we can do that next week.
Okay, let's go ahead and do that. So um, moving on to the last segment of this episode, it's going to be um, kind of to compile everything, it's going to be uh, adjustments, reads and um, session management, we'll call it.
Oh, boy, that's a good, that's a good topic.
Which one? Adjusting all in general? Yeah, session management. Um, um, let me look over my notes here. Okay, uh, it's a good place to start. How are you adjusting to aggressive players in your session?
Oh, here's a point I was gonna make. It's perfect for this.
Okay.
And I actually said it on a stream recently. One thing that I think is not said enough is you, you don't have to adjust to anybody. If you have a better strategy than them, you can just make money by playing very solid fundamental poker and you, I'm not, I'm not saying you shouldn't adjust, because I definitely make big adjustments to certain players.
Yep.
But you can just play try and play very close to GTO and Doug Polk talks about this too.
So don't force these adjustments. Maybe make them on the rivers if you're heads up in a pot against this guy and you know he's bluffing a lot more regularly or something.
Yeah, and I also say that because I think the vast majority of players would do better to learn a lot more fundamental strategy. Rather than, because we're we're all human, like we can sort of figure out reads to an extent, but also can trick ourselves into justifying. I I guess, yeah, pe- people can justify certain plays like, oh, I had this read, da, da, da. I think the vast majority of players out there would do better to just try and play really good strategy and then you know, maybe tone down the adjustments a little bit.
Okay.
That being said, um, to a very aggressive player, and we'll say someone who is because I think online, a lot of times in online cash, when you find yourself up against a very aggressive player, it's usually someone who's very good. So I would generally just try and play really sound strategy against them.
Okay.
Um, but if it's someone who's like like the other day, maybe it was yesterday, I was in a cash game with someone who limp shoved seventy five big blinds with ace, seven suited and with ace, five off. And
Are you just, are you calling? Are you sticking with your fundamental strategy or are you going to start opening your calling range?
We're definitely, there's no real fundamental strategy against the five blind limp. But but yeah, so my my adjustment here, once I've seen this a couple of times would be, okay, I should figure out what I'm willing to call off the stack with. And pretty much just open that, maybe, you know, maybe if I can open a little bit wider because I can assume he's not always doing that, but like, pretty much just open hands I'm willing to call the jam with. But also be loosen that up. So so tighten the opening range, but loosen the the calling range. So like I can call it off with ace, queen off or ace, jack suited.
That makes sense. So you just don't have to fold all this this crap that you're opening, you you the tighter, you're tightening your range so you don't have to fold to these massive stupid jams.
Right, yeah, we're we're looking to take advantage of the fact that the stack is going in. When when you open limps, it's going to go in like half the time, maybe pre flop.
Yeah.
So we're we're like, okay, how, what, and then there's no perfect way of knowing. Uh, you know, this isn't, this clearly isn't like a defined strategy we're up against, but if he's doing this with well, he ended up busting when he had ace, five, oh.
Not surprised.
Yeah, but someone, you know, someone in the game had pocket eights and raised versus limp and then snap called.
I bet you're rooting for him to win though.
Yeah, although honestly, the other player wasn't, you know, he was uh
Oh, okay. Well, it's good that the both
He was definitely a little better for sure, but yeah, so versus that type of aggressive player, you just want to yeah, it's kind of boring, but you just wait for the good hands and put a lot of chips in.
I mean, that's an
You know, you can, you can trap a little more.
Yeah, don't try and get too creative. Do things a little bit more simple.
Yeah, don't, don't, I I see this mistake by players where they try to play more pots against this type of player because, oh, they have, you know, they're they're super wide, like I can, I can get them, right? And it's not necessarily, like, you you probably have it's one, like, if you put the aggression back on them, that's one thing, but you don't just want to call super wide to try and get them because now you know, like you you might want to bluff catch wider on the river or something, but you don't want to just put yourself in there with a wider range of hands where you're still still behind pre flop.
Okay.
So
What is uh, how do you, Wes, decide when to quit a session, um, whether you're winning or? What's that?
No, I just said when I'm up ten K.
Oh, yeah, perfect, which um, yeah, how do you decide, decide when to quit a session? Differentiate from winning and when you're losing? Do you ever have like a stop loss? Like, just to kind of cool the, like, say you're just down, snapped on
In live cash I do, which I probably should online, but if I'm starting to feel like tilted online, that's a good time to stop or at least take a break.
Recognizing tilt is a huge one, I feel like, like a lot of people will just lie to themselves.
Yeah. Online cash, I would also say there there can be tilt from being up too mu- you know, if I'm, if I'm up four K an hour into a session, do I think I'm going to be as dialed in the rest of the way? Maybe not, like, maybe, maybe it is time to just hit and run if you do that, you know?
Yeah, so you're not splashing as much.
Yeah. Like, I I don't think my play will be wildly different, but maybe some of these you know, maybe I'm just not going for it as hard or being passive, whatever, whatever little thing it might be, maybe uh yeah, maybe when you're up enough where you feel like, whoa, that was a great session. Yeah, maybe you do. Like, of course, you want to work on yourself and get to the point where you're not changing it at all, but you also want to be realistic, like, yeah, maybe I should just call the session and be happy with the day.
I think that's a great way to do it. A lot of people don't end up doing that, but like, yeah, I think that's a, I think that's a solid strategy as well. Let's go ahead, Wes, and wrap it up with one last question here. Um, and this is to uh, to a lot of our listeners who are tournament players who want to start playing cash, maybe more professionally or even just, you know, recreationally, but what's the single best tip you can give to someone looking to become a winning cash game player?
Study. I I really, I believe what I said a few minutes ago where almost everyone out there would benefit so much from just learning some theory, especially in cash. And while yes, if you're making good deviations, you exploitative play is good, but there there most players in poker lose, right? And there are a lot of people out there who call themselves feel players. And really what that means is, I mean, of course, every human has instincts, but it just means
They don't, they don't study.
They don't have a baseline, right? They don't have a
I wouldn't say they don't have a baseline. They can have a baseline. It's just not based off theory. It's based on what their experience is.
But also sometimes it's just all over. Sometimes it's based on their emotional state too.
That's a big one. And that's, yeah, that I think that's huge too. I mean, there's obviously some really good, we've had a lot of really good you know, feel players on the podcast, for example. But um, but yeah, a lot of times, I feel like, you know what? They're very good tournament players. Where I think in turn, I guess, you know, in today's discussion where we discuss cash, yes, you're right. I think just having that fundamental or that theoretical foundation will will just be the most beneficial to you. So I think that's
Especially in online cash.
Okay.
Where the reads are a little bit less easy to come by.
I guess this is an absolute great time to plug. I mean, if you want to really kind of just ask questions and and, you know, say you're not in solver land yet, but you want to get some feedback, whether, you know, your plays are sound, theoretically approved, whatever you want to say, hop in the Discord. Um, link in the description. We're people in there discussing, you know, plays all the time. And if you don't have a solver, you, someone in there will run it for you. I mean, it's, I see it all the time. Someone brings up a hand, they don't know how to use solvers, someone else, for example, John Coffin or someone
Yeah, he's great about it.
Yeah, he loves hopping in there and helping people figure out the theory behind the hands they play because he's, I mean, he's a passionate guy and he's in there all the time breaking down hands.
Yeah, I would say Mike, uh, Mike Puddinhead.
Yeah, Mike Wilklow, you know, we had him on the podcast. I mean, there's a lot more than just that.
He's suddenly just a bracelet winner.
Like suddenly just a bracelet winner, yeah.
Yeah.
But there's a lot more than just those two in our podcast though. So just hop in the Discord, link in the description. We're approaching three hundred members. Make sure to do that. Um, secondly, we have our next meetup game on Clubs Poker on Tuesday, the nineteenth, so make sure to use the link in the description to sign up for Clubs if you haven't yet. That helps support the podcasts and then come play with us. Come blast with us, rather. I might not blast this week. I need to get my fourth title here.
Yeah, I actually might, because I I know, I already know I'm not going to be streaming that day. I'm going to be at a Twins game with a buddy, so I'm going to be on my phone playing this game.
Just blasting away. Oh, it's about time, because I was at dinner last week blasting away. Um, and then, yeah, if you guys want some sweet suited Kings gear, make sure to check out Tilted Compass, uh, link in the description. We, they have back, you know, this is geared how do I even say this? This is geared just essentially meant for poker players, right? They have awesome, incredible backpacks that even have locks on them. They have a ton of, they have a ton of different uh types of clothing, you know, hoodies, shirts, everything you can think of. Make sure to hop in there and check it out. But then we also have a collaboration with them. You can find them on their website. But we have the link in the description specifically to the suited Kings hoodies, shirts, all that good stuff. We've been seeing a lot of people rocking them and I just want to give a big shout out and appreciation to those people. Thanks for rocking the, you know, and supporting our podcast by purchasing some merch.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, I mean, we already talked about Club Spoker. What am I missing here, Wes? Is that, oh, yeah.
Patreon.
Yeah, dude, can't forget about the Patreon. If you guys enjoy this in-depth discussion, you know, discussing theory, discussing field, discussing all of it, just enjoy the way that we teach, Wes and I. Make sure to check out our Patreon, link in the description for that. We have our fifteen dollar a month. I mean, if you go into any of these training sites, they're going to be a hundred dollars, whatever, anything. They're just very expensive. If you want to improve your game and enjoy the way we teach, fifteen bucks a month, we release videos every week. Um, and you can even hop in Discord and give us tips. We'll make videos based on your recommendations for what you want to learn, so check that out.
I will say, and and for those who, we did have a streak there where you know, we're in Vegas, my computer was kind of kaput.
During the WSOP videos, hit a wall.
Yeah, we we are now, we are now releasing videos much more consistently and will continue to do so.
I mean, how many do we have in there now, Wes?
I would somewhere in the twenty, thirty, thirty something.
I would say north of thirty videos in there right now that you can just go and start catch up on. I mean, if you pay fifteen bucks, go do it.
If you enter now, yeah, it's like you have all this, all these videos beforehand and please send us suggestions. Um, we have a Patreon section in the Discord. Ask us questions that we can, we can, I know there are a couple we still have to get to from there, but yeah, absolutely. Give us some content that you're, you're, some spots you'd like me to review or for us to talk about. Even I would actually, yeah, go ahead. Also, watch my Twitch, watch my bankroll challenge.
That's a great way for people to learn, especially in cash games, because he's playing, well, tournaments and cash, you're playing both all the time, so.
Yeah, but hey, you know, I'm making real money in cash so far, so you know, it uh you, one thing you can watch me, but also just like, you can ask me, people have asked me questions in chat.
In real time, yeah.
In real time and
Well, close, there's a delay, but yeah.
There is a delay, but I will absolutely give you an answer and it's like free, I mean, it's a mini coaching, but I would say there there are, you know, I do some private coaching, but I also would say I think a lot of people can just get better value from one, doing our Patreon or just ask me on Twitch stream, like I don't you know, the the hourly, the the value you'll get for your money probably i- is more that way unless unless you're really looking to take it seriously, right?
Yeah.
So
Well said, yeah, I think there's a, I mean, that's what we do, right? We're here, we're not, you know, we're not a drama podcast or poker news podcast. Well said. Yeah. I think there's a, I mean, that's what we do, right? We're here, we're not, you know, we're not a drama podcast or poker news podcast. We're a poker strategy podcast. And our goal is to not only improve our game, but to improve yours just by us talking about it. You know what I mean? So, yeah, appreciate all the support we've gotten from you guys. Looking forward to next week's episodes. We got some good ones coming up. So just a little teaser there. Not going to spoil too much, but anyways, Wes, any last thoughts?
We have one more later this week that.
Oh, we do. Yeah. Yeah. No spoilers, Wes. But anyways, any last things you want to say as we wrap this up?
Not really. I mean, that was a good, good session, good topic. We often focus more on tournaments. So.
Yeah.
Love talking.
And middle fingers as you just provided for me.
No, I didn't do that. You're, you're full of shit.
Oh, full of shit and a middle finger. I love this. Thanks, Wes.
Oh, gentlemen.
I'll see you in your Discord later, just not gifting subs and telling you to.
Oh, in the, in the Twitch chat.
What did I say? Discord?
You said Discord.
Yeah, something like that. But anyways, all right. Thanks guys for taking the time to listen to today's episode. Hope it was, you know, beneficial for you. And I hope it does get you juiced up to play some cash games. Make sure to join our, um, our meetup game next week and we'll do some 50 cent, or 50 sweeps coin, I should say. Cash games next week or ring games. Shoot, it's so hard to not say cash that.
Ring games.
Yes. They're va, you know, one-to-one exchange rate. We'll just leave it at that. But anyways, I hope you guys have a good rest of your day and Wes, get bent.